Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City Play First Part State of the Work Session. Let's call this a order. Do I hear a motion for adoption of the agenda? It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, everyone. Tonight, we just have one topic ordinance. Twenty-four, twelve ninety-two, adopting the twenty twenty-one international billing code and other construction-related codes. Dr. Calvin to pursue.
Yes, sir.
You have the floor, Mr. Frank.
Okay. So this is our second session. First one was very quick, so. I'm gonna go through a lot of information. I know I've got more time than I had last time. I think I have thirty minutes this time. Matt's getting forty-five, maybe. So I'm gonna start off with the energy code because that's the one that really everybody's complaining about. Touch on a whole bunch of subjects, so I don't know. Whiteboard first. I've got pictures that'll be showing. Do you see here? Kind of if you can read that. Matt, could you go to the second page there? One more page, I'm sorry. I don't want to get in that way here. If they didn't see anything. There you go. This is the big deal. Right now, the energy code, all we have is we have an R twenty bat in the wall. The new code now says we have to run an R five rigid on the outside. That's a one-inch rigid insulation that goes up on the outside of the wall. And of course, your sheetrock and so forth. They do give you an option here where you can run a two-by-four stud with an R thirteen insulation with an R ten rigid on the outside, which is two inches there. Can I? Go whiteboard now?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Right now, our walls. Wow, yeah, this. Current codes are. R twenty-one. I I promise you, I can draw better than that. This just is not real. Yeah. Sorry. I already racist, just. Window U value. Right now, it's a. Close. Sorry, folks, I can clearly write better. Us. R five. Still that mark for. And I feel like kindergarten here. This is really. Looking very good.
You're doing fine.
I can read it. Okay. Sorry. I'm sure he might have chips worse. Okay. And I'll go back to what we originally had with that. So we're going from an R twenty-one wall to really an R twenty-six wall now. We're going from an R forty-eight ceiling to an R sixty or sixty-four. The floor is still pretty much the same, R ten rigid. The U value and the windows have changed. When you look at the cost, being a next builder, it's probably a plus forty thousand for each house total. So that's what the energy code is. That's on top of heat pump. Uh, Renai, all the stuff you have to do, we're adding, just by adding the energy code in here, we're adding about forty thousand dollars to the contractor cost of the house. I mean, the house I have to go up the price. Anyhow. Yeah. Yeah, how do I resell this now?
Thank you. Uh, thank you for the description. Yeah, differences. Have they calculated what they thought was the payback to mine or life cycle cost?
Pretty deep payback.
So, for example, I presume that these changes will be done proposed to save energy.
Yes.
So, uh, an uninsulated house uses more energy than an insulated house.
Right.
When you add in additional insulation. Will you save the cost of the additional insulation by ten fifteen hundred years? Meaning, if your energy bill is a thousand dollars a year and you save a hundred dollars, and it costs you five thousand dollars.
Well. I I've done, there's a million different ways that you could come up with. If you're talking about an existing residence. And let's say you've got a two-by-four stud wall with single-pane windows, which the E loss and that. So low E value windows now are usually about U twenty-six, twenty-eight. You look at a single-pane window, it's about one point oh. Okay, so you can tell it's a lot of heat loss there. So if you don't change your windows out, you don't re-insulate. And I'll come to some other things here. Attic insulation, ventilation, all of that, it all adds up. So the more, the better. But on top of that, though, you want to keep the air quality still good in the house. That's where we get stuck at. That's why we have the ventilation. So. Uh, Matt, yeah, could you go? Please. Here's your insulation. Now, the problem with this for a lot of builders is that with an R sixty-four or an R sixty insulation in there. R sixty, you've gotta go deep. That's causing a lot of problems for our builders because they typically want to go nine feet first floor, ten-foot first floor walls. And then go another nine foot second floor, and you go on and on. Well, if you got a thirty-foot maximum roof height like we do in so many jurisdictions. Most cases, you're gonna have to drop one of those floor systems down another foot to make up for that R thirty insulation. And that's thrown builders out. To me. It's not a big deal. It it needs to happen. Uh, you can see here, though, with vaulted ceilings, so we're still with an R thirty-eight insulation, which we're at now. But again, you know, there's a lot of ventilation requirements that we already have. Let's see, Matt, could you go? Yeah, okay, right here, right here. Uh, I think someone asked me about additions and all that. You can see right here, we're in addition greater hundred fifty square feet joint, blah, 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 blah. I'll let you read it. But there, it's not a real big deal if you're below a hundred fifty square feet. You don't have all the real strict requirements you'd have on a thousand-square-foot addition or a five-hundred-square-foot addition. So in that, I'll leave it right here. I also want to explain that part of my job as the building official and inspector here is that I verify that a blower duct inspection is done. I don't know if any of you know what that is. But what that is is you hire out, you come out, and they're, they want to see how much air is being pulled from the house. They pressurize the house. Okay? And they seal the entire house off inside. And then they take a blower, oh, it's a big fan, and set it in the doorway. And it's a big, it completely covers the doorway, and it'll actually pressurize the house. And in that, you have to be point four changes, whatever. And it's pretty interesting. I have to have that certification on every new home. Right now, it's point five, I think. So, and I think that test is about another five, six hundred dollars to the builder. But it has to be done per code, lower duct inspection. And certification has been required now for a couple of years. Okay, Matt. Some of the other things here. I think last time I was telling you guys about the wanted to show you the outlet boxes. See here? These have little grommets in them. This is what I have to look for now when I'm doing my frame inspection. Not only is the wiring, is there a grommet there sealing that wire through there, so there's no E loss in there. Then I've got a gasket that goes on over the, uh, cover. Weird. In the old days, they used to just caulk these with three amp or something like that to stop it. In the energy code for the last probably fifteen years, part of my inspection is you cut your insulation flat back and you tuck it back behind the outlet boxes. And that's, I still catch people out in the field every once in a while where they just kind of flap it off to the side. And I have to fail them because they have to tuck it back behind there. So that's gonna be the new big thing for outlet boxes. And there's another one. I just wanted to show you that picture. Okay, the other thing I remember talking to you about was the idea of having dimmers in homes or a sensor control on certain doors. The only place they're really required would be in the living room. They're not required in a bedroom, a bathroom, hallway. See, hold on, yeah. Well, I know they're not required, and yeah, here we go. These controls in bathrooms or hallways. So when you leave a room, those lights are supposed to start dimming. You know? And then outside, any of your, your, you know, say, safety lights, if they're over thirty, I think it's thirty watts. There it is. Yeah, thirty watts of exterior lighting, lighting. You have to have the same thing out there. So pretty much if you have a solar type setup, that's pretty much gonna do it. But if you're over that thirty watt, you're gonna have to have some type of dimmer that starts, you know, bringing the light fixtures down. Okay, now, let's see. Okay. This is about July first, twenty twenty-three. That's part of it, that the they have updated the codes now, the twenty-one codes come real strict. I wanted to show you kind of heat pump. I know a lot of you folks have heat pumps, so your homes and all that stuff. The other thing is excuse me. On a new single-family home, there's a table that's required. It's the Washington State Energy credit table, and that, I'm sorry to bring a copy of that with me. But that table, you have to have eight credits for each single-family home. That means that you have a whole itemized list to pick out of there, whether you're gonna run a heat pump, type of heating, all these different things. Believe me, it's hard to get to that eight credits. You're gonna have to run a really good heat pump. Low E windows, all of that stuff. So. Yeah, all right. Any questions so far? You know, I'm moving fast. Am I making sense to everybody? Okay. All right, I know this is a required. You know? More or less, I work with the electrical inspector to make sure that the house is wired for the charging station and all that. We have to have a forty amp dedicated two eighty grab circuit in there. Um, and again, I I talk pretty closely with the lead inspectors for for L and I and all that, so. Same thing I was talking about with the exterior lighting controls. Uh, the sensors and all that. Okay. I'm gonna jump from the energy code to my favorite part, which is the building code. I come from a real strong commercial background. I'm used to balls and different types of occupancies and all that. So one of the important things for me, when I'd be inspecting a huge mall, and I had all these different types of occupancies, am I required to have fire separation walls between? Well, you can look here. These are all your different types of, A, B, institutional, residential, factory. Uh, I'm sorry, I don't brand it. Utility, business. Um, anyways, these are the the H occupancies are the high hazard occupancies of fire department. But if you look over and you were to say I'll just say Tracy asking Cal, I've got an R three occupancy, but next door, I've got an H one occupancy. Well, you can run over here. R three, and it'll say, no. You don't need any. It's not permitted. You can't do anything. You know? Same thing with a B occupancy, which we're in right now. We're also in an assembly area. But a B occupancy is typically an office. Yeah, let's see P. And if I was to go to a factory type. Come down to here. And I'm required to have a one-hour separation between the, between those walls. That also means that the doors have to be rated doors with self-closures. In somewhat, I'm sorry. In some applications where I've had CMU walls uh, that were, say, in H, a lower H, like an H four. And I might have a a glove place next door to an S. I would have a guillotine door that has a what do you call it?
Switch.
Yeah, well, it burns away and it drops the door. What?
Fusible link.
Fusible link, there it is. Yeah, I had those. So anyways, yeah. I hope that kind of gets you some understanding. Now, if I've got a single-family home and I've got my R three occupancy and I'm a I'm a You're touching. Man, I can't touch it. Um. Anyways. You've got a one-hour separation wall typically between your house and the garage, everybody else said. And now the code is saying, guess what? Not only do you have to have the fire separation door, which is a one and three-eighth solid floor door. A lot of people know this, too, that the door has to self-close and latch. So that's just kind of a quick thing on the tables that I use. We don't get much commercial here, but some of the mall stuff I've had uses over the years. Next slide, Matt.
About question? Yes, sir. So one of the changes with the housing code is that we would be allowing duplexes under state law. And so what would, are there any changes to the walls separating the two units?
It depends on how many units you talk.
It was just a duplex.
Yeah, you still have a one-hour separation. That's, that's pretty standard. You know, like you live, I'm not gonna say. But anyways.
Yeah, but you kind of.
Multi-family buildings, you're always required to have a one-hour rated wall. Outlet boxes have to be offset by sixteen inches, all that stuff. So duplexes treat a little bit different, not quite as strict as, say, a big multi-family building like you have over there at twelve degrees north. Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah. Um, garage doors, I thought I'd throw this one in here. It's kind of crazy. Now they're telling us we need to make sure that they are labeled garage doors. Really? It's like we have enough to look at already. Now I gotta be checking for that. So anyways, I kind of threw that out there to kind of show you that every little bit, everything that I'm telling you. My inspection loop goes up typically like for a single-family home, and I think Mark knows, Jeff does, right, Phil? Typically, a single-family home, I'm gonna do about twenty-five inspections on that house. That's a minimum. Those are progressively going up with everything else that they're adding. You know, and that means our fees have to go up and pay for my time and the plan or the time of the else. Yeah, okay. Excellent, Matt. All right. Jumping around here, residential applications. Waterfront people love these commercial-grade stoves. They're not allowed anymore down on the waterfront. They're gone. You can see are not allowed residential applications. Now, how am I gonna argue with somebody that puts one in their house? You know, I still have to go. It's not allowed by couple. Part of that, too, is the venting that's required on these things. They usually require venting in excess of four hundred fifty C F M, which means makeup air and all kinds of other things. And I think I talked to council before about makeup air. It's a tough deal if you've never experienced it. When I was a young inspector and I was in a a house with, I think, the building official I was working with at the time, and they had not put makeup air, had not hooked it up yet. So we took a candle, lit the candle, and I stood back away from here, turned that thing on, and that flame pulled right up inside that ductwork. So that, the the makeup there actually even set all out. Okay. Excellent, man. Duck work, typical things. Now, this is kind of a new one. Clothes dryer, see your distance from here to your window. Usually, it's per the manufacturer specs. It was stricter than that, same with dryer ducting. But now it's per the manufacturer specs in any direction in every appliance, every mechanical appliance is different. So. All right. Smoke, smoke alarms. You're required to have a smoke alarm here. Okay, then in the, in your ceiling up here. And then if this is vaulted up here above two feet, another one's gotta be here. So the hot, and if you've got your gas, you gotta have your detect, both detectors in. Trying to see how clear that is. Yeah, so one here. Went back up here, and if I bolted way up here like this, and I got all of a sudden the waterfront that basically kind of looked like this with the high ceilings and all that, and they're open with the walkway across. So here's another one. Kind of, I've already talked to you guys about the the gas appliances and how I always require the gas shut-off to be within three three feet of the appliance. Well, typically, I have the valve that's within foot of the appliance, and they're direct-to-bed appliances, so. Okay, excellent. Oh. Yeah. Another one. Now, single-family homes, we have to brace up for if there's going to be any ADA requirements in a single-family home. We don't require any single-family, single-family home to have any ADA block or anything. Nine oh or twelve degrees north, I had some buildings that have they're ADA-equipped, the plumbing's there to be closed. But now what I have to look for is blocking in the walls in the frame from the back, just make sure I block it there for the grab rails, if they want to put them in at a later date. All right, we get a lot of this late for us part. This is part of the plumbing code. It's really become popular where they come through and they run resin through here. It's a liner. And that liner has to comply with code. Jeff and I work real close with this one. Uh. I have to make sure I have the camera. I have to have the guy's camera. I have to witness the camery of this line all the way through, all the way to our sewer main, and make sure I don't have anything dumping into our main line. Where any excess resin sit at the end of the line. So basically, I gotta watch that thing go sixty feet, forty feet, hundred feet, whatever it is. So, but that's a pretty slick way to go. It's very, very expensive. So. So. Bathtub overflow. So I'm trying to keep things really basic. Okay? And flow on something. Most of you know that you have the overflow drain in your tubs. They're not required anymore. It's the homeowner responsibility. For me, I like the, the overflow being there. So did I just hit something? Matt, what did you do?
Two fingers.
Was it B?
No. Yeah, there you go.
There's a smoke alarm through, talking about. The good thing for me is that I've believed in carbon monoxide detectors for years. And you can see now, now you get a combo smoke and carbon oxide detector in usually in the hallway. Now, they're required any in homes where you have gas. Let's say you have a a gas fireplace, a gas stove. New single-family home. Now, if your house is all electric, it's really no point to putting them in, but we still do. I think they're a good thing to have because you never know. So. Is that it? Woo, okay, that means I gotta talk now. Great. Questions so far, colleagues? Questions? I losing anybody? I know Paul knows this stuff.
And you have one follow-up to America. The question was asked about ABAP, so don't quote me. And the reason being is this is a long process. Not all the coded amendments were adopted. But analysis was done and completed in early twenty twenty-three for the state building code council. That analysis is based on huge quantity of parameters varied, such as interest rates. And we all know how those change. Uh, but just for a way of example, it's about thirteen point eight years for a simple payback for a single-family home. Just to give you a general idea, but all those numbers are changed. Just to give you a general idea, but all those numbers are changed and not.
Thank you, Mark. Council, what other questions, Calvin, or staff? Once they're lost in words, Calvin, you stun them. You stunned them. Please continue.
Oh, okay. Well, I didn't. Yeah, let me touch on some other things. Uh, solar, solar is one of the big deals here, Cal. We probably get. Probably, I think I talked to Tracy about this, probably about two to three. Uh, solar applications a month here in LFP, where it's becoming pretty popular. The code really hasn't changed much as far as, I know most of you know that. The solar panels, the way they're set on the roof. They have to have a certain area of the fire department to walk through. That's usually either eighteen-inch or a two-to-one area above the panels. They've got to be a certain distance. From the hip and valleys of the house. Um, to locate, the location is really important. So those are huge right now with the new energy code. I have yet to. Final a new single-family home here in LFP that was already solar-ready, or that already had solar on. Everybody's going solar after they're occupied. So I, like I said, I haven't had one single-family home. That was new, that was already had silver on it. That was happened, that's a fact. So, there's that part. Some of the other stuff, you know, the good thing about the difference between the eighteen and the twenty-one codes is. The eighteen codes, I came to you guys, and I think I had that time about a hundred fifty-five. Code changes. This time. Thank God the fire code hasn't changed much. There's really nothing in the fire code. That changes for LFP or really any other jurisdiction, other than. Uh, walking, talking type things, frequency, stuff like that. We're still. Uh, I'm working on a plan review right now for the new Chase Bank, which is gonna be across the street from us. I don't know if any of you have seen, I've got a set of plans that are about an inch thick on that. That's gonna have to be fully sprinkled. It's over. Three thousand square feet. Any. Business building that's above three thousand square feet here in LFP will be fully sprinkled. So, and just to touch on. I, most of you already know this one. We don't have a sprinkler ordinance here in LFP. Now, that being said, given the type of access that we have. Fire flow we have. Uh, let me put it to you this way. I'm building a four, a four thousand square foot house, same. And I have six hundred GPM at the nearest side, which is in the front yard of the new single-family home. In Sheridan Beach. Well, your minimum fire flow for sprinkling a home is fifteen hundred GPM. So you can imagine about six hundred GPM. And that's literally right now, down around thirty-seventh to one sixty-fifth, where we really have the old system of hydrants. That do not, far up like we have over North Shore Utility. Those are really good over there. Parts of, uh. Shoreline North City, LFP Water. We've got, sorry. We've got pretty good flow since they did the parking lot here and revamped that whole system. Now we're reading. About three thousand GPM at the hydrants on forty, I'm sorry, one eighty-four. Just the road behind, uh, as you go through the light at Ballinger and City all there. Go back to one eighty-four, we got good. Good water flow there. So anyways, that's that part. Uh, any questions so far?
Albert?
Yes?
Is there any fire flow maps that show those GPMs for around the city?
I don't have. Again, we have our city, yeah, for sure, yeah, things that's part of it, yeah. Yeah. And mostly with the older homes. Uh, again, it is all about access too. You've got a house that's steep slope area. Got a questionable driveway, which believe me, how somebody's own never got put up. With the access they have up to dogs. Uh, probably. We do about twenty, I think twenty new single-family homes. Here in LFP every year of those, most of all, so that being said, they're always typically. Above three thousand square feet. They're gonna be pushing for heck up. You're not gonna get water flow in a lot of the areas here in town again, unless you're in North Shore Utility. But even then, if you're, have a, an access drive that's too steep, sprinkle.
Is this the same water supply for hydrants?
I'm sorry?
The same water supply as hydrants?
Yes. Is it?
Is it? I don't know. Is it the same water supply that the hydrants have? The, the fire hydrants?
Yeah, yeah, we got four districts. Yeah, the four districts, so, but like I said, the, the, the one that, that really stumps this is Sheridan Beach. And, and up by you. Those, in those areas, they're, they're lucky if they're running. It's other GPM. You know, and up the hill, like up, up thirty-fifth and all that, but I could come down to. You know, some parts in North City water. After I'm out of Sheridan Beach. And be around fifteen hundred GPM. It just depends on. Which water jurisdiction you're in. It varies like crazy all over town. And I have seen it lower than six hundred. GPM, and particularly on Shore Drive and Beach Drive. It's pretty low down there.
That's my first one. So given that, uh, there's like an inner title to clean all of these, um, water districts because they have to, right? To be able to supply, uh, fire protection. Um, why? Is it a pressure differential or is it a pipe diameter differential? Why is this?
Probably all of the above. Yeah, I, size, it's too small. Cold hydrants. You know, there's, there's a combination of a bunch of things that have hydrants. And particularly, the system just not being large enough to sustain that. That's the same thing with, and I'm jumping back on the energy code. You get rid of gas, but what are you gonna do with? Power. Is our system enough to, to maintain all of this before we're going, cutting out fossil fuels? Completely. And I know most of you watch the news. They're saying we're in trouble here with. Power right now. What are we gonna do?
If all the questions, we've got a few that's going to work in the room to move upstairs. Sorry.
No, we're good.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you mentioned, uh, some concerns about. Some of the proposals. Are you gonna recommend that we not adopt any of these? You're gonna recommend to be adopted?
Yes. I don't, my, my. I look at things like this. I would like to see every home that we've, and I do, final here in LFP. Totally need the energy code. Yes, it's difficult. I started this thing in nineteen eighty-eight, and it's an R eleven wall with an R six series window, U six. Lot of heat loss in those homes built thirty-five years ago. The newer homes by far are much more energy efficient. And plus, with heat pumps and everything else we're doing. I think it's, there's not. Sorry, there's nothing there that I, I would have meant.
I'll make some other questions.
You got any, any of you that want to know anymore, you can always come to me or. Mark or Jeff, and I'll be glad to. Anything you need to know about the code. Gladly, any questions you. Think up later. John comes out, you know, Tracy always gets into docs, and so, and John, so. Well, thank you, everybody. I hope this is informative. I hope you got a lot out of it.
Thank you, Calvin.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're generally gonna be moving upstairs. Thanks for everybody.